Well, he's the only last man standing. This last man stands as Emmett Kurt.
Oh, I'm proud of him.
It's like everyone else is too late to say about that. I was retired player too.
Good country square.
Cheaper on you, that one. Yeah, very well. That was a bad deal. You shouldn't have retired. Probably would have been fine. You know what they say, you retire, the body's not... Such a body you should get enough work done and doing such a body as I'm doing today. If I can get around, Luke, it's not for me. If I can get around, Luke, I would have loved to have been this year, but obviously, you're supposed to go last weekend, and my son... My son, his son just broke his foot, so he's in a cast right now.
All right. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us for the December 3, 2019 meeting. Commission, I want to call this meeting to order. And I believe we are ready to start the introductory video. I'd like to call the December 3, 2019 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and witness the pledge.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we hold our meeting this evening, and cold winter weather is coming to our mountains more frequently. I wanted to ask that we take a moment to think about the individuals and families in our community who do not always have a roof over them at night or a place to call home on these cold winter nights. Last winter, nearly 800 students in Buncombe County experienced homelessness during at least some period of the school year. We know we have many veterans in our community who experience homelessness. So before we begin our meeting, let's have a, hold a moment of silence to offer a silent prayer for those who struggle with homelessness or housing insecurity, and to reflect on what we can do as a community to better support people in need during the season. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, we've got a couple of different announcements to make. I'd like to announce that we have parking validation. And for people who use the county parking facility or transit to attend the meeting this evening, you can get validation for your parking pass or transit pass from one of the security officers who is with us this evening, see them on the way out. I want to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member. Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at this meeting. Okay, we come to the consent agenda. Are there any questions from any board members about any items on the consent agenda? Yes, sir.
Turn the mic off.
We will, we will. Yes, we will. Yep.
What was it, Greg?
We, um, we need to add one item to the agenda under new business at our meeting this evening, which is the appointment of a vice chair for the coming year. Is there any objection, any commissioner, to add that under new business? Under state statute, the vice chair for county commissions must be appointed at the first meeting in December, so we need to do that this evening. All right. Any members of the public who have any questions about any item on the consent agenda? All right. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published with the addition of the appointment of a vice chair under new business?
So move.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, first, under good news. DK Wesley, our Assistant County Manager, is going to talk to us about the Communications Department's win. Yes. We're going to do that under new business. Sure, we will. Yes, we will, but not quite yet. We will get there soon. All right, so we're going to have a good news about the Communications Department winning the award for Employee Focus Internet.
Commissioners, by way of introduction, our communications director, Katalo, will provide more information to you about this exciting news, but I just wanted to briefly give an intro. I think communication is one of the most difficult things to master in an organization, large or small, specifically internal communication. Since managers, I think we struggle with making sure we have adequate communication throughout our organization, that there's a continuous feedback loop, as well as an opportunity for our, our staff to share. And so I was very excited, we were very excited to hear that our communication team, along with the IT team, won a national award for employee communication for our Employee Focus Internet site. So I want to congratulate Katalo for his leadership on this effort, and he's going to share a little bit more information about the association as well as the award.
Nice to hear. See, at the 2019 CMA Conference, which is the City and County Communications Association, Buncombe County Communications even won the SAVI, which is a first-place award in the category Digital Interactive Issues Decided by the Employee Focus Internet Direction Freedom.
We can't hear back here. Check.
Thank you.
The SAVI awards recognize outstanding local government marketing achievements and the professionals who have creatively planned and carried out successful innovations in city and county communications. The CMA is a national organization with over 950 members from more than 575 local governments. There were over 700 award entries for all the categories in total. Buncombe County won first place over numerous applicants, with Johnson County, Kansas taking second, and Phoenix, Arizona, taking third place. Comments from the CMA judges were, "What a great redesign of the internet. It is so important to ensure that employees are well-informed." Another comment was, "This looks like a great improvement from the old site and inviting and personal way to change the culture of your agency by working from the inside out. Employee focus is easy to read and visually appealing." Employee focus was launched in January 2019, and to date has featured 16 departmental spotlight articles and over 30 employee spotlight write-ups that are shared both internally and externally on social media and our website. The Employee Focus news page is a place where staff can find important organizational administrative news and announcements, as well as where employees can showcase their great work for our county. I'd like to give a special thanks to the IT web developers, Anthony Perron and Brittany Klein, who are not here tonight, for building the platform, and to the communication staff that manages the platform, which is Dan Hess, Max Tainer, and Cassie Day, and to all the employees and departments for submitting content for sharing. Thank you.
All right, great job. Thank you, Katalo, thank you, DK. Congratulations, great job. Okay, next up, we have a presentation on the Community Health Improvement Process.
Hi, good evening. My name is Zoe Hopeu, and I'm the Buncombe County Community Health Assessment Coordinator, and I thank you for this opportunity today to present our Community Health Assessment and Health Improvement Plan that will guide our population health initiatives from 2018 to 2021. Before I begin my presentation this evening, I'd also like to acknowledge our Buncombe County Health and Human Services leadership that has been really supportive of our work and was instrumental in us being able to share the strategies and the plan that we have to guide our work for our county. So thank you to HHS Director Stoney Blevin, and also thank you to my direct supervisor, our leader, and very impassioned and connected Public Health Director, Jan Shepherd. Also want to thank key leaders at MAHEC, Frank Costerbonco, as well as Evan Richardson, who support our team in doing this work. Tech, we're ready? So the purpose of today's presentation is provide an update on the summary of the 2018 Community Health Improvement Process. We'll also recap some of the key community engagement milestones and provide an overview of what's ahead in our community health improvement. As a final result, we aim to illuminate for you several key, relevant, and meaningful instances of alignment between the Community Health Improvement Process with our forthcoming, community-informed Buncombe County Strategic Plan. And as we move together, realize a healthy, thriving, and resilient community. It's likely that you all have seen this image or similar with some, some version of the Community Health Assessment and CHIP process. That's an accreditation requirement for many health departments across our state, as well as the country. As a refresher, the Community Health Assessment is required by health departments by the North Carolina Division of Public Health and Local Health Department Accreditation Board. Every three years, Buncombe County Public Health Department partners with mission, MAHEC, community members, nonprofits, as well as health agencies and universities and schools to ask key questions, such as, "What are the strengths in our community? What health concerns do communities have? What are the resources available? And what do we need in the community to address these concerns?" Ultimately, from this process, we will develop, implement, and evaluate strategies to address our identified health focus areas. Thank you. So continuing. Since the start of the CHIP cycle in 2018, we've heard from more than 800 community members. That's 1.5% of all those who live in our county. This provided input that was incorporated into our final 2018 Health Assessment, or the CHA report, with the support of 45 organizations. As you'll see here on the slide, there are some key, and we think really impactful communication, community engagement highlights, where over 304 respondents took part in the telephone survey. Over 20, we had 29 community-based organizations' leadership act as key informants into informing this document, as well as 137 community members who gave an hour to two hours of their time in listening sessions. From all of this intentional outreach with our county's residents and partners, we were able to take that input and then identify two health focus conditions, that being infant mortality and birth outcomes, and mental health. Shortly, you will hear more specificity on the data informing these focus areas, the evidence-based strategies selected in part by community members, along with agency partners, and we will also share how we plan to measure our wins and those opportunities to do better in reporting the Community Health Improvement Cycle. Pictured here is a visual summary of the most common themes residents gave during this process in the response to the prompt, "What's the most important thing that you need for you and your family's health and well-being?" This word cloud also demonstrates that our county's residents are, in fact, experts in what works for them. Our community cares deeply about, our community is also informed, and they here articulated the direct linkage between the context of where they live, learn, work, play, and pray, together known as social determinants of health, with the status of their well-being. It's clear from this word cloud that they are making a connection between social determinants of health, as well as our community's well-being. With the community at the heart of it all, this data provides a compelling case to remain diligent champions of efforts that help sustain a diverse, equitable, and thriving community. Central to community is inclusion, and it can be considered a catalyst for improving health. Ample evidence exists that those mothers who are experiencing belonging, connectedness, and living in a context of social cohesion have better birth outcomes. Similarly, bonding, acknowledgement, and validation help build those positive neural pathways which mitigate against feelings of loneliness, despair, and negative self-soothing behaviors which lead to addiction and disease. Through all of our assessment efforts, all of the analysis, all of the engagement, planning, and moving to action in the CHA and CHIP process, our health department is seeing emerging and demonstrated improvements in harvesting both internal and external outcomes. In sharing these outcomes and to outline the ways in which we can use this process to leverage those increments to build readiness and capacity developments to address these big, complex issues. Internally, this work has positioned our organization's teams as regional and state leaders in innovation, planning, and implementation. We see improvements in our organizational cultures, as well as our team, as our teams are developing awareness and skills in equity to be trauma-informed, as well as brilliance, as, as well as resilience-responsive approaches. In our strategic learning and innovation, we are making data-informed decisions and making innovations in how we gather, analyze, report, as well as leverage technology. For example, throughout the summer, our Community Health Assessment attended baseball games at McCormick Stadium and asked people to use their smartphones and respond and see their answers displayed on the Jumbotron in what matters most to health. There's nothing more American, there's much, nothing more inclusive, and there's nothing more that builds people, that brings people together than baseballs. So what you can see from that issue is we're using innovation and taking those opportunities where we see pre-existing, self-organized groups of people coming together to engage them in conversations for help. We're also exceeding benchmarks. Our CHA report and our CHIP are both recognized as meeting and exceeding expectations by the Community Health Assessment reviewers. We're leading, are leading projects, and we're seen as exemplary in our use of results-based accountability. And it is our Community Health Improvement Process that has been identified as a key catalyst for moving forward in all other counties that actually create the CHIP to use results-based accountability in how they plan and do their work. There are also those exemplary external outcomes that we can note. The Community Health Assessment is rooted in systems orientation. We don't look just at individuals, we don't look at just neighborhoods. We look at entire systems in order to see improved health outcomes. To that, strong partnerships are a key catalyst to developing well-defined networks and power-sharing and capacity development. Visibility and messaging are also key, as we earlier noted, the value of communications for our county government. And finally, as we work to bridge community and health, we acknowledge that this work is iterative, and albeit complex, reliant on authentic engagement sourced in relationships, and committed to building trust. I thank you for the opportunity to share and breathe what we've learned, and as well as our readiness to stand up this work and what's needed to go forward. And to continue, my colleagues from MAHEC, Terry March and Hannah Ledger, will share more on the focus conditions, the strategies, and what's ahead for our CHIP.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Zoe has outlined the overall Community Health Assessment process, and the process of moving from the Community Health Assessment, or CHA, to the Community Health Improvement Process strongly emphasizes community engagement and uses a results-based accountability framework that stresses easily-understood language and concepts with the intent that all can equally participate and be heard, and a process that ensures a shared understanding of common, a commonly, single, commonly-held desired result. And we also take time to intentionally unpack root causes. And this is a view of one of the process, processes in our community engagement activities around the Community Health Improvement Process. And you can see when we're talking about mental health and well-being, the root causes that emerge in that conversation were stigma, working poor who can't get services, so the service gaps. When we talk about substance use, we automatically, we, we have a tendency to emphasize opioid crisis and forget that substance use piece, institutionalized racism and urban renewal. And prison and jails often serve as some of our biggest mental health service providers. So all these are parts of that process of unpacking the story behind these health conditions that we're trying to address in the community. The core of the Community Health Improvement Plan development took place at what we call Talk-to-Action Community Events in June and July, and we had 55 individuals that took part in at least one of four different work sessions. We had more than 20 additional stakeholders in our Community Health Improvement Advisory who worked with us to refine strategies prior to submitting our Community Health Improvement Action Plan to the North Carolina Division of Public Health on September 9. With our new ability to submit our Community Health Improvement Plan online, the CHIP is a living document that is available in real time and will be refined and developed with ongoing community and partner input over time. I'm going to spend a few minutes talking specifically about our Mental Health and Well-Being Focus Condition. There has been broad participation by a large number of organizations that have engaged in the action planning to date. And I think it's really important to note that we continue to broaden this list by meeting with individuals and organizations that can inform our learning around this work, as well as develop relationships that can help this work move forward. What you're seeing here is a screenshot of our Community Health Improvement Plan that was submitted to the state. And the plan developed around, as I mentioned before, a commonly-shared desired result. And our community partners engaged in this process identified "All in Buncombe County are able to live free of stigma, supported in mind, body, and spirit in times of both strength and difficulty, with resilience, self-determination, and a positive sense of self-worth, regardless of income, race, neighborhood, nationality, ability, and age." Our partners identified two community level, and by community level, I mean population level, whole population indicators, to show progress towards achieving this result. A criteria for choosing indicators is that data is reliable and is available frequently enough to show process. We also look for indicators that say a lot about a condition, in this case, mental health in Buncombe County. So a large number of individuals are seeking care at the ED for suicidal thoughts. There were 612 individuals who did so in quarter two of this year, and approaching 6,000 sought care for anxiety, mood, and psychotic disorders. This implies that likely many, if not most, of these individuals are not able to receive the routine care that they need. And it also implies that prevention efforts are inadequate because these numbers continue to go up. Our first strategy identified by our community partners to change what we call the story behind the data. behind the data is to support cross-sector collaboration to create a trauma-responsive and resilience-focused community. This will entail first defining what we collectively mean by trauma-responsive and resilience-focused, and second, developing a community plan to meet that definition. Our initial conversations have been focused on what are the community-based and prevention-focused approaches that can be employed, so not as much focused on the clinical or the access piece, but what can we do in community? How can we lift ongoing and innovative work of local organizations such as Resources for Resilience or the Omoja Health Well-Being and Justice Collaborative? Where can we support the good work our schools are already doing by helping to support teachers and parents? Where can we align with and enhance existing work around community efforts like homework diners? So, supporting what's working, what's available, where people live, from trusted resources, and helping fill gaps where needed. Our second strategy is one that was independently identified in the Talk-to Actions for both our focus conditions around mental health as well as birth equity. And that is advancing cross-sector collaboration to undo racism, and Hannah will talk more
Hello, my name is Hannah Ledgerton. Thank you for having me. Before we jump in to the work to improve equity in birth outcomes and infant mortality, or birth equity for short, as we'll be referring to it, I'd like to make sure that we're speaking the same language. Our community partners have repeatedly voiced the importance of advancing equity, which is distinctly different from equality. In plain language, health equity means ensuring that everyone has a fair and just opportunity for good health. As shown in this image, providing equal support to all community members does not actually get you fair outcomes or provide the lift needed for all community members to get the support that they need. So, in order to advance health equity, this requires removing obstacles to health such as poverty, discrimination, and their consequences, including powerlessness and the lack of access to good jobs with fair pay, quality education and housing, safe environments, and healthcare. The three main systemic barriers to health equity in our society are institutional racism, class oppression, and gender discrimination exploitation. This list includes organizations that gave input on the chip plan to advance birth equity. Both Chip Advisory and Mothering Asheville are collaboratives within additional stakeholders. With birth equity, we are building off existing work that chip has been supporting alongside many of these partners over the past five-plus years, with a lot of leadership and support from members of the Mothering Asheville Movement, including the YWCA and many others shown here. This is the first time that the State Department of Public Health has offered counties the opportunity to commit to a longer-term or a 10-year chip, and we are glad to be able to continue to support this work over the coming decade. Our action planning process brought together many partners who have been leaders in this work, along with folks who are newer to the focus on birth equity. You can see on the list of potential indicators that impact birth equity, the issues community members raised ranged from traditional measures of birth equity, including rates of infant mortality inequities, prematurity and low birth weight, to including underlying factors of access to true-living wages, affordable housing, the impact of the school-to-prison pipeline, community violence, and segregation on community and individual stress levels. In these images, you can see the parts of the story behind these data that really hit home for people as they were thinking about what strategies we should be lifting up, strengthening, or creating. The photo on the right harnesses or highlights the strategies that really rose to the top. Our community's understanding of the impact of racism on birth outcomes aligns with decades of research that has found that Black women, regardless of their education or income level, are more likely to have poor birth outcomes than white women of any education or income level. The commonly-thought-of protective factors of education, income level, and even health behaviors are not enough to counteract these inequities. This is believed to be due to the negative impact of chronic and unmitigated stress of experiencing racism over the life course, combined with disparate access to consistent, quality, and culturally-appropriate responsive healthcare, community, and systemic resources. This slide includes screenshots of our new chip with result language directly shaped from the Talk-to-Action participants who envisioned wanting to achieve a thriving and safe community, leading to 100% healthy births, mamas, and families, a community where families are educated and supported with access to adequate resources and a stable household. The current indicators shown are starting points, key indicators that we have been tracking and we know stand for so much more. Our overall infant mortality rate in Buncombe County of 5.1 means that for every 1,000 babies born in Buncombe County, roughly five will die before their first year of life. This rate is better than the North Carolina rate of 7.1, and it's on par with the national average. However, the U.S.'s infant mortality rate is number 33 out of 36 developed countries, so we still have significant room for growth. Most importantly, the inequity, the avoidable and unjust difference between Black and white infant mortality rates in Buncombe County is persistent and increasing. In our most recent data, Black babies in Buncombe County are now four times more likely to die before their first birthday than white babies. The three strategies that were selected to include in the chip act... In the chip align with the three main categories of the North Carolina Peridatal Health Strategic Plan. On the clinical level, providing ongoing support to evidence-based strategies to improve maternal care, including doula care and other pregnancy home visiting programs. On the community level, promoting breastfeeding-friendly policies and services in the local communities would be... Thank you for your support in advancing this work already. And on the systems change level, addressing social and economic inequities by advancing cross-sector collaboration to undo racism. I'm going to spend our last few minutes just unpacking this a little bit more. So, to unpack our community's infant mortality inequity a little bit further, since 2010, the white infant mortality rate in Buncombe County has decreased from 4.7 to 3.8 deaths for every 1,000 live births. This is on par with some of the best states in our country. During the same time period, our Black infant mortality rate has increased from 11.7 to 15.1 deaths for every 1,000 babies born, again, meaning that Black babies in Buncombe County are now four times as likely to die before their first birthday as white babies. In a county with so many resources, this is unacceptable and must be addressed. During the same time period from 2010 to 2018, North Carolina's Black infant mortality rate declined from 14.7 to 12.7, and the white infant mortality rate for the state declined from 5.9 to 5.2, making the statewide inequity ratio 2.4 compared to ours, which is nearly four. Around the world, infant mortality rates are seen as a key measure of how healthy a community is, because we know that so much more goes into this than just prenatal care. Infant mortality rates are often considered the tip of the iceberg or the canary in the coal mine for the health of a community as a whole, and our community partners share this view in the comprehensive approach that it helped us shape. As Dr. Arthur James, one of our nation's leaders in combating infant mortality, describes it, "Infant mortality is multifactorial. These rates reflect a society's commitment to the provision of high-quality healthcare, adequate food and good nutrition, safe and stable housing, a healthy psychological and physical environment, sufficient income to prevent impoverishment, and as such, our ability to prevent infant deaths and to address longstanding disparities in infant mortality rates between population groups is a barometer of our society's commitment to the health and well-being of all women, children, and families." Across both the birth equity and mental health action planning processes, advancing cross-sector collaboration to undo racism was identified by community partners, members, and our Chip Advisory Council as an essential strategy to prioritize. Although there is work already happening in our community to undo racism and discrimination, this is a new strategy for chip to officially prioritize and support. We are still determining how this strategy weaves through and guides all of our work. For the ongoing birth equity work, our partners in advancing this work through Mothering Asheville have committed to addressing structural racism, implicit bias in access to care, to improve equity in birth outcomes in our community. And this summer, Buncombe County, with the leadership of the Public Health Department, was selected to join communities across the country to participate in City Match's Institute for Equity in Birth Outcomes over the coming three years. City Match is a national learning collaborative of maternal and child public health department program leaders, working to promote health equity among women, families, and communities. They are already pushing us to engage community partners in difficult conversations necessary to address inequities, to engage community members authentically, and to continue identifying new upstream and downstream strategies that will reduce inequities, and to engage in this work with passion, flexibility, courage, and optimism. We're in the early stages of figuring out with our partners how this will guide the emerging mental health and well-being work and the Chip Advisory Council's ongoing work to address social determinants of health equity. We are identifying key partners to advance this work, including building a partnership with the county's Safety and Justice Challenge, which also, in addition to aiming to reduce the jail population, shares a focus on cross-sector collaboration to advance racial equity. And we are working to align efforts with others within the county, across governmental stakeholders, and related systems. This image just reiterates what our community partners have been clear on throughout this process, that in order to make an impact on birth equity, infant mortality, and mental health and well-being in our community, we have to work on addressing the pervasive impacts of racism and discrimination across all social determinants of health. We hope this update is useful as you are finalizing your strategic planning process and that the community voice and strategies summarized here are able to inform and infuse your global strategies moving forward. We will continue to work with community partners to refine our action plans and begin implementation, to bolster the work with existing stakeholders, and engage new partners, and to explore how this work to advance cross-sector collaboration to undo racism and discrimination weaves throughout all of our work. We will continue to assess our progress. In March of 2020, the Buncombe State of the County Health Report, the SACH, will be our next update on this work to the North Carolina Department of Public Health. And we've recognized that there are always more partners to be engaged, so if there's anyone you would like to recommend we connect with, please let us know. I'd like to invite my colleagues back up if you have any questions.
I'd first just like to say thank you to everybody who worked on this, and thank you all for the in-depth presentation. And this obviously elevates issues that we need to be talking about a lot in our community. I had a question, just as you all did the work around birth equity, what the thinking was among community members, among y'all, around why we saw a rise in infant mortality rates among Black babies in the last eight years, when that trend didn't happen in other parts of the state?
There are theories, but we don't have a concrete answer for why. I know that in talking with Dr. Melandor, since 2013, there was a spike in deaths that are identified as sleep-related and sudden unexplained infant deaths. Unfortunately, there's a lot of complexity to those cases that aren't easily explained. And similarly, to kind of the overarching theory, there's a lot of... It's hard to drill down on the concrete health behaviors linked to these incidences when so much of what we know nationally is that there's all these systemic issues at play.
When looking at this through a social determinants of health lens, we know that where we work, and so those opportunities, so economic opportunities, so whether it's owning a small business, which is key, whether it's owning a home, those are the two strongest upward mobility and economic drivers for families. And so, we know from several reports produced by coalitions that are very much seeped in diversity, equity, and inclusion, whether it's looking at our workforce, or it's studying some of our housing trends, that quite often, we've been seeing that the burden and the lack of opportunities is very much held by women of color. And so, not having those key tools that very much do influence behaviors, do actually work as protective factors, one could make those connections to those poor birth outcomes that we see.
Thank you all. I really appreciate you flagging the strategic plan and very much hope that as we head into sort of the final season of that, that these conversations around both mental health issues and birth equity issues and sort of thinking about children's health from a prenatal perspective will help shape that. This is also certainly so deeply connected to the work we're doing around affordable housing, around early childhood education, but feels like it gets at some of the core and also structural issues that mean some people in our community are in pain. And I just really appreciate the work y'all are doing to bring so many voices into this and to bring data to bear on it and to sort of help lead the work forward. So, thank you.
Thank you all again. I, of course, am on the HHS board and heard this presentation last month, and even after hearing some of those same statistics again, it still is shocking to hear a second time. I'm really intrigued and continue to be in how the crossover continues with what you all heard from the community versus what we are looking at in terms of our strategic plan and how we can really mesh those together. There seems to be a lot of opportunity, particularly when, as Commissioner Beachrimer said, with early childhood issues, with affordable housing, the opioid epidemic, all things that we're looking at, you all are looking at as well, and it seems like we really have an opportunity to streamline those, to really better serve our community, particularly our women of color and those who are expectant mothers. Those numbers are unacceptable in today's society with the medical care that we have available. So, I hope that we'll continue to look forward on that, and I look forward to supporting you in those efforts.
So, I'd like to make a couple of comments. Hannah, you had asked that if we knew of somewhere that you could reach out to, and I've made this statement many times at different places. I would encourage you to... When the problem is great, you knock walls down because you want help from wherever you can get it, right? And where I live, I ask for an amen from those in the room, which is true. So, I would encourage you to reach out to the faith community. I would knock down all the doors that I could on churches. I would reach out to the pastors, their congregations, for their help, their assistance, both physically and prayerfully. I would encourage you to do that. The other that I heard, which I would also encourage, we just came out of our housing committee, and we're talking about affordable housing, and I heard one of the comments made about owning a home, about homeownership. I personally believe that homeownership is a path to independence. I think that it does a lot of things for families and encourages them in a lot of different ways. If there's any way that the county can help with putting that message out, I know we're all glad to do that, and it is a very worthwhile message, because I think it empowers the entire family, and I think it helps the entire family. I don't think there is anyone on the board that when you showed the mortality rates that there wasn't a sinking feeling, you know, within our heart. And so, I would encourage, you know, continuing to drill down to the why and continuing to focus on that, because if you've got one person, if you change that by one, it's worth all of this. And so, really spending some time on that, that's not your responsibility, it's our responsibility, you know, to seek the solution, but gaining as much information as you can, that would be great. So, thanks.
I want to thank you for bringing this report forward. It's unfortunate, because it brings back a lot of bad memories in some ways for me. I can remember in a conversation, a group of us, my freshman year in college, we were meeting with Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and he said something then, and I just had a recent birthday, that reminds me of what he said. He didn't say equality. He said, "Young men, you will be fighting for equity for the rest of your lives." And you know, he was right, unfortunately. But I want to thank you for bringing this to the attention, not only of us, but hopefully the people who are watching tonight, and they'll understand... And they all understand why we're bringing forth affordable housing, pre-K. These are issues that you're going to get right to the core of what you're talking about, not only for racism, for the black and brown communities, but for the tone community, even for poor people too. But this is something we've got in America. We are afraid to discuss this. But until we own up to living in a racist society, and it's been that way for me, for my people, for over 400 years, until we get to the crux of it and really start doing something about it, we're not going to be anywhere. But thank you for what you're doing, and it's up to us to give you the backing, the elected officials, of what you need to continue to correct this. And as long as I'm in this seat, I guarantee you, you'll get the support from me. Thanks.
Terry, Hannah, so thanks so much for your presentation this evening. Appreciate all the work you're doing. All right. We have a public hearing on a resolution approving the delivery of a tax-exempt installment loan between Inca Fire and the Musquee Department and First Bank. And Michael Frue will get us started on this.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'll essentially take this one off. We have Chief Beddingfield here to speak to the project itself. But Inca Fire has been working for some period of time to get ready to construct and equip a new substation for the fire department on the west side of the Inca Elementary School property on Jacobian Way. And this is a $2,055,000 project. And it's really coming to this board because of the Internal Revenue Code. This would be a request for an interest-free loan. And through what we call a TEFRA hearing, Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, way back when the Reagan administration did the last overhaul of the Revenue Code, raised taxes for many, they put in place this act to allow for interest-free financing for certain projects. And since this body is the governing unit having jurisdiction over the area, the request comes to you just to approve the project. It does not pledge the faith and credit of the county to pay it. It's not a pledge of the taxes, and it does not constitute a debt of the county. It is purely a debt of Inca Fire Department. As I understand it, they're securing the loan with the old fire department on 151 and some fire apparatus. So that's the request for the approval of this board only, not to guarantee the debt. And as to any specifics, we'll ask the Chief.
He's here to answer any questions you might have. Chief, thanks for being here.
Thank you. Mr. Newman, fellow commissioners, I want to thank you for taking your time to consider this resolution as before you today. For those that, I think everybody knows me, I'm Howard Beddingfield from Inca Fire Department. And on behalf of Inca Fire Department and our Board of Directors again, I want to thank you for your consideration and support. This is a tax-exempt, low-interest loan, construction installment loan that we are seeking between ourselves and First Bank. And just a slight correction, the construction project is a little over $3.1 billion. We're seeking a loan from First Bank for $2,555,000. So as Mr. Frue mentioned, this is a statute that we had to satisfy in order to be eligible for this tax-exempt program. So it required the approval of our local government.
Great. Thank you, Chief. All right. Would you need to have a public hearing on this? So I'm going to open the public hearing on this at 6:11. Are there any members of the... Sorry, is that right? 5:55. I'm sorry, 5:55. I'm losing it. Probably close. All right, 5:55. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this proposal? All right. Close the public hearing at 5:56.
Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So there's, I'm seeing two resolutions. Is there one motion?
I think we just need to pass one resolution. Is that correct?
There should be one resolution. Yes, that is true.
Well, then there's actually...
It's two pages.
If you...
On the agenda shows resolution twice. Just one recommendation to this board, there is the resolution.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'll favorably say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Michael. Ms. Penner, are there any items under new business? All right, we have no old business items. Under new business, let's go ahead and take up the appointment of the vice chair. And this will be an appointment for the 12-month period coming up basically for 2020, I guess, starting, it's effective as soon as we go... Basically, the new business. Are there any nominations? I hear nomination of Commissioner Robert Presley. There's a motion and second to appoint Commissioner Robert Presley. Any other nominations? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Commissioner Presley, congratulations. Thank you for willingness to serve as vice chair for the coming 12 months. Do you have anything you'd like to share with your constituents?
Your inauguration speech.
I'll just go as Jasmine always says, "I can take this plane off. We might need some help landing." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The other item under new business is a presentation from Don Moore, our finance director, on the fiscal year and 2019 audit.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning. Been here a long time. Good evening, Commissioners. As you know, you contracted with Clifton Larson Allen to conduct the fiscal year 19 audit. That has been completed. Chris Kessler from CLA is here to provide the report to you for your listening pleasure and to accept. Staff worked very hard in the four months, I shouldn't say four months, really it was two months from the time we presented the 18 in April until the close of business to get things cleaned up, that's what I'm doing. They did a fantastic job, so I'm very happy that we were almost on time with the 10:31 deadline. If it wouldn't have been for some factors beyond our control, we would have made that date. But all in all, it was a very good audit. I'm going to turn it over to Chris after he speaks. Then I believe Tricia is going to say a few words from the audit committee. And we'll be happy to answer any questions after that. Thank you.
Good evening. Matt's ready for the presentation. Thank you. Hi, so as Don said, my name's Chris Kessler. I am the engagement principal in the 2019 audit with CLA. I work purely out of state-level governments around the country my entire year performing audits and other services. So I am located out of our Fort Myers, Florida office. I used to be in this area. But, you know, our firm, we take an approach of putting the right people in the right seats to serve our clients. We don't just put the local folks on the audit team. So that is why I am here as your audit principal, and here to talk about the results from the 2019 audit. So the agenda for what we're going to talk about, we're going to talk about the services that we performed over the course of the audit. We'll have some required communications that we are required to make to you all. We make them in writing, but I like to highlight a few things within this presentation as well, because it's important for you all as board, as governance, to hear these things from me. I will talk about the audit approach summary, some of the areas that were higher risk that we spent some significant time on. And then we'll talk about some findings as well that we had that really kind of summarize the results of the audit. So the services we provide, we audit the financial statements, which is the comprehensive annual financial report referred to as the CAFR. We audited the June 30, 2019 CAFR, and we perform that audit under government audit standards, which is required for a municipality like yourselves. And then, of course, we audit the federal and state compliance, which is known as the single audit. This is the audit of the federal and state grant awards that you all receive on an annual basis. So the reports that we deliver that are included within your financial statements, we have our independent auditor's report, which is the opinion. We have the report and internal control of the financial reporting, which is referred to as the report and internal controls in short form. Then there's the independent auditor's report on compliance for each major federal and state program. This is your single audit opinion. And then there's the governance communication. That is a letter that summarizes the results of our audit that we issue at the end of the audit to the Board of Commissioners, and that has required communications that we have to make. And I'm going to discuss some of those required communications for you all. So the first thing is our auditor's opinion on the financial statements was unmodified. And what this means is it was a clean opinion, which means the financial statements were free of material misstatement. And this is the highest level of opinion that you all could receive on your financial statements. Within the opinion, there is an emphasis of a matter. And this doesn't change our opinion in any way. But it's a result of prior period adjustments being present within the financial statements. And those are detailed further in Note 11 to the financial statements, but we just have to indicate that in the opinion to bring emphasis to the users. The scope and timing of the audit, it proceeded as planned. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of our approach and our risk assessment procedures that we did to determine where our risk areas were. We do that at the onset of the audit. We communicate that to the audit committee before we start our procedures. And if anything had changed, I would have to tell you that now and tell you what caused that change, what the change was, what procedures we had to do. But there were no items that occurred during our audit that caused any significant changes to our audit plan. Significant accounting policies, these are disclosed within no one of the financial statements. But the conclusion when we audit your financial policies and procedures, they are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles referred to as GAAPs, and there are no departures from the authoritative guidance. The significant estimates within the financial statements are listed here. And what this means, you know, estimates are subject to change. There's significant assumptions that go into any sort of estimate. And we have to inform you all as the users of the financial statements what those significant estimates are, because they're subject to change. They could fluctuate significantly depending on changes in actuaries, changes in specialists, any sort of adjustments to these assumptions here to here. So we audit those assumptions, we audit those estimates, we audit the work of the specialists. All four of these items here are reliant upon work of specialists, whether it's engineers, or actuaries, or other professionals within this service field that you all, as the county, hire to determine these numbers. So we audit those numbers, we audit the assumptions, and we determine that they were all appropriated and recently stated. We have to communicate any sort of significant corrected misstatements that existed within our audit under standards. The majority of these items listed here were actually caught by the county. They were management that reported these adjustments, but they were related to the prior period. So under standards, we have to consider those to be audit adjustments because it wasn't caught in timely manner. But I want to emphasize that to you all in that, you know, the county's policies and procedures did bring the majority of these entries to us during the course of the audit. Uncorrected misstatements, this means adjustments that, they weren't material necessarily, but they were above a certain level that we have to summarize and report to governance as existing, as not posted to the financial statements. But again, they're not material, and the financial statements are not material and stated as a result. We had no difficulties in performing the audit. We had no disagreements with management, and management was very cooperative, professional during the audit, a pleasure to work with. You know, as Don indicated in his opening remarks, I mean, this is the second audit that has been issued in 2019. So that is significant effort to get things cleaned up from where 2018 was for 2019. So, you know, I'll say from our standpoint, a thank you to the county and Don and his team for helping us get things done effectively and efficiently during the audit. So our audit approach, these are some areas that we hit on and consider to be a little higher risk during the procedures we perform. Some of them may seem somewhat obvious when you think of a county operation and where some of the large dollars are. But because of the amount of findings and, you know, some of the results of the audit last year, some of these areas still became higher risk because we needed to make sure that a lot of these items were cleaned up. So anything that was a finding last year resulted in a higher risk of material misstatement than we spent a little more time on this year. So that comes into the findings. And, you know, what we report falls into two categories. And there's a material weakness and a significant deficiency. For items that are small and best practices within the financial statements, we can make a verbal recommendation, or what we call a management letter. But a material weakness is, as it sounds, it is an internal control deficiency or an adjustment to the financial statements that was material during the year. Significant deficiency is anything that would be considered, not material, but we consider significant enough in our judgment that we should be reporting to you all. So from a financial statement standpoint, there was one finding this year. It was a material weakness related to those audit adjustments that I discussed earlier. These adjustments were to restate beginning balances within the financial statements. So under standards, that does become an audit adjustment. We do have to report a finding for that. And the finding truly related to the fact that those adjustments were not detected timely, and that they happened this year instead of last. We did issue a management letter with some best practices as well, just related to some of the timing of sales tax receivable reimbursement requests from the state, some best practices on procurement card transaction limits to make sure that those policies and procedures are being documented and followed. And then expense reimbursement and time card review for board-appointed officials and elected officials, just making sure that policies are being followed and that they are being reviewed in accordance with the policies. From a single audit standpoint, we audit our major programs. There are a variety of ways that we determine what program is major. And a certain dollar threshold has to be met. And then we have to look at, was it audited recently, every three years? Or have there been any issues within the program, or turnover, or changes in compliance? And then for things like Medicaid, the federal government tells us we have to audit those every single year, regardless of what is happening within the program. So our five programs are listed here. We have three federal and two state programs that have to be audited. The results of the single audit, our opinion on the federal programs was also unmodified, which is a clean opinion on compliance. We noted no controlled efficiencies and no instances of compliance within those federal programs. Within the state programs, we had a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion on compliance, but we did note two internal control deficiencies that were considered to be significant deficiencies that were related to timely report filing and timely background facilitiations that are required by the state rules governing that program. And with these items, it's important to note as well, you know, when you think about the cycle of audit findings, and that this 2018 audit was issued in April of last year, that was 10 months into fiscal year 19. So management only has a certain amount of time to implement a corrective action plan and start cleaning these things up. Meanwhile, some of these items have been occurring. We have to audit the entire year for 2019. So these instances we've noted really are carryovers from the prior year findings as well. So the corrective action plans have already been implemented by management, and these should not repeat going forward. So I want to put this context in here as well for you all as we talk about findings and the results, and, you know, what an achievement it was to be able to get two audits out in one year, two financial statements in 2018. You look at the comparison between 2018 and the 2019 audits, and the number of findings year to year, and you look at these three that were in 2019, they're all carryovers from 2018. They're all prior year audit items that have dragged into 2019. So that is a very good sign for you all as governance to say that management is focused on implementing corrective action plans and resolving findings. So with that said, that's it for my presentation. Those are the things that I really wanted to cover. I'll pause for questions or comments or anything else.
Does any questions at the moment from Commissioners?
I don't know where the... And I think it would be good to know on the corrective actions, you know, the progress of those, you know, what they are, how they're being handled. And I think, you know, that would be my only question. I have full confidence that they are being issued. But I think it'd be good to have that, you know, as ongoing information, or however it's reported back to us, that progress has been made and, you know, checks in the right boxes and so on.
And I can comment on how that affects the audit and what we do to address those items, and where that actually does get reported in your financial statements as well. So whenever there's findings in a So whenever there's findings in a prior year, we understanders are required to look at management's corrective action. They have to provide to us a status of prior year findings. Either it's been fixed, it hasn't been fixed, or we have no intention of fixing this, stop asking this. You don't want that. But those are the options. So, you know, that's the first step. We look at it and we say, okay, they have been corrected. We then test that. We test management's assertion to say, have these findings been corrected? Let's look at the documentation. Let's look at policies and procedures. Let's look at these reviews and authorizations that address these items. So when you go back to the original slide that had the data on it as far as how many there were last year and this year, that's the sign that those items were addressed and cleared. We tested it because if they weren't, they would have to be repeat findings or ours were going forward.
All right. Thank you, Chris. You mentioned that you'd like to have Tricia from the Audit Committee also share a few thoughts.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I just wanted to provide a brief overview of the role of the Audit Committee for the benefit of the Call of Fame for the record. When the committee was created in the year 2000, its primary responsibility was oversight of the external financial statement audit process that just was presented. This includes the entire process from the selection of the audit firm to ensuring that those audit findings are followed up on and addressed, appropriately resolved, and anything in between. So the committee is actually made aware of progress, potential issues, outcomes, any of those corrective actions, and what was done about those. And for informational purposes, the role of the Audit Committee is also updated in 2017 to include oversight of the internal audit function as well as myself as Director. The composition of the committee is defined in that initially and refined in 2017 to include a specific set of competencies. So it's a matter of experts from banking, accounting, business fields, and Commissioners as well. That composition helps ensure that what is talked about and discussed in that committee meeting is meeting best practice with its membership and ensuring that everything that needs to be communicated as a conduct to the Board of Commissioners happens. Because of this responsibility, of course, with audit, the Government Accountability Office for the United States is on its own, it's probably for transparency and accountability over and over the programs. And we also want to thank CLA, Chris and CLA for presenting that information to us. And now I wanted to provide an opportunity for our Commissioners that are on the Audit Committee, Commissioners Presley or Commissioner Whitehead, to provide feedback about the Audit Committee's response on the audit from our meeting this morning.
Well, I think y'all need a big hand for what y'all done. And Chris, appreciate everything. What we heard this morning, you know, in our earlier meeting with you, how hard our staff has worked to do two audits in one year, what they've done, and with the people that you've done it with. And, you know, Don, Terry started and passed it off to Kelly. And then Trish, you got pulled in here at the end. And y'all done an amazing job. And I just want to thank you that I'm part of it and got to listen to everything that went on.
Yeah, I'd just like to add to that. I appreciate and I hope everybody realizes the hard work that our employees have put into this. You know, I spent 40 years in banking, but I've never seen a mess like we inherited when I became the Commissioner. But thanks to the good employees that we have here at Buncombe County, we are really light years ahead of where I thought we would be at this point in time. And that's all due to the hard work of all of our staff. And what's been good about it is a good mix because, Don, we have several new people involved along with our employees who've been here for years. And it's all, we've formed an excellent team, and it's really paying off for us. And we just appreciate the hard work you've done and done. And I can say this now for the Commissioners, but for the constituents. I think the 260,000 people in Buncombe County would agree with the saying because what you've done, it's unbelievable at this point in time. All I'll say is keep up the good work and make all of us look good because you're doing the work.
Follow up, Trish. And I think this was something we were supposed to bring up a while ago, to make sure everybody realized that 2018, 19 total, and there was only three in the next year, but then was a carryover.
I know, she is.
So, I mean, what a great job. I mean, I can't thank y'all enough.
We can't. I agree.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Staff appreciates your support and your accolades because they definitely deserve it. The only thing left is for you to accept the audit. So I would like you to decide if you want to accept it.
I'm willing to accept the audit.
There's a motion in the second to accept the audit. Call if you're pleased to say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Don, Chris, and Tricia, thank you all for the presentation this evening. And Al and Robert, thank you for serving with the Audit Committee on behalf of. All right, that concludes our new business. We now come to our board appointments. Paul, we have one.
Maggie Adams.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. We are also need to talk about our newest public commission, which is our Parks, Greenways, and Recreation Advisory Board. So this is a new board that the County Commission has created to facilitate community engagement around the county's work in these arenas. And so we've had a lot of interest in this new board. We've got nine positions to fill, three from each of the three commission districts. So we have 25 applicants. And we talked about this a little bit in our pre-meeting. I think the direction the county indicated in our pre-meeting we'd like to go is to have a chance to do interviews with some of these candidates and to... So here's what I wanted to suggest based on our earlier conversation. So we've got the list of folks in front of us. The Commissioners have all been emailed everyone's applications and associated background information for those who submitted that. So we do have 25 applicants. I suggested we'd like to do interviews with a lot of these folks. How about this, what if we, all the Commissioners think about who you'd be interested in, can bring some names to our next board meeting in two weeks? And what I would suggest is maybe bring no more than three. And maybe, maybe have your first, second, third, who you would like to make sure we interview. I think if we do more than that, we should just interview everyone because everyone will be on the list. I think if we bring your top three though, between all seven Commissioners, I think we'll have a very good pool of people to interview. That's my suggestion. Are there any thoughts from board members? My hope is that maybe we interview, you know, maybe 15 or 16 or something in that neighborhood. Still going to take probably about two and a half hours to do that. But if, you know, if we do interview everyone, you know, it's going to be a day or, you know, a large part of one. So that's my suggestion. I think if everyone brings in not more than three, I think we'll likely arrive somewhere in that neighborhood is my hunch. Any thoughts or does it sound like a good process to advance the discussion?
It's probably a bad starting point unless we have some overlap, you know?
Well, I think there will be. So I think if there's seven of us, but we each bring two or three, there will be a lot of overlaps. I'm hoping maybe we arrive at around roughly 15 folks to focus on.
So we'll probably go over and in our... Do we want to discuss it in the pre-meeting? Or do we want to discuss it in the one o'clock meeting?
Well, the one o'clock is our pre-meeting, right? So we're going to do a one o'clock pre-meeting. Let's not do it in our strategic plans. We've got a lot of stuff to cover there. But I was thinking the one o'clock meeting, we have an appointment to discuss who to interview on this one. Great. Great. And if, you know, and if, and I think as we get there, what I'd suggest we do is everybody go through and everyone first name your person you want to interview. Go around, and then once we get to all seven, we'll do it again. And everybody suggests your second person. Let's see where we're at at that point in terms of total number of interviews. And if we're still, I mean, we need nine people, so we definitely want to interview more than nine people. So if we could go to a third round. And if there is somebody that just some Commissioner just has a burning desire to interview, then, you know, we'll do it. But this is kind of my suggestion for how to come up with a pool of applicants to purpose.
You know, the only comment I'll make is I just want to make sure that we are, that we have three that are diverse and geographically represented in the county so we can... And one may not be as experienced as another one to be able to achieve that. So we just kind of need to try to keep that in mind if we can.
Right.
I wish I knew a lot of those people that's on that list, but...
Well, you know, nobody is obligated to only suggest people from your district. But, you know, if everybody kind of, in particular, think about the folks from your district and think about the geographic distribution in your district with the goal that you just talked about in mind. And we want to have a good cross-section from across the county on this board. All right. Well, it sounds like, it sounds like no objection to that. So bring your folks, and we'll talk about it more in two weeks.
So do we have to procedurally move this to another meeting or not since it's on here?
I don't think so because it's boards and commissions. So it's kind of out of discretion how we want to take it up. So I think we can just plan on taking it up at the meeting next. And, great. All right. Are there any members of the, if there's any members of the public who wish to talk to the board now, now is their chance. So you have three minutes just to let us know your name and where you live. And let me just also comment, when the red light goes off, it means your three minutes are up. And we ask everyone to stop things. We want to give everyone the same amount of time.
And don't take any of my time. Don't turn it on without getting started. Thank you. The, you need facts, folks. And I want to share some thoughts with you since you are the establishment of policy and the leaders of the county. When you talk about births and deaths, you also need to know the number of births per 1,000 people. And then you have your number of deaths per 1,000 births because the number of births is going to affect the percentage of the number of deaths. And those of you that know numbers, if you doubt that, let me know and I'll show you. And all that concern's been shunned. There's another number you need, the abortions per 1,000 pregnancies. If you're so concerned about the babies, let's talk about the abortions per 1,000 babies. Oh, I see you don't want to talk about that. Now, leave that topic. Homeownership. You give somebody a home that they haven't worked for, what are you going to do to it? They're going to run it to the ground. You've been over Baptist to help them, and what are you going to do to it? Homeownership requires taxes. It requires maintenance. And I'm going to tell you what. The way you folks are talking about spending money and solving all the problems in the world, you're going to drive the taxes so high that you're going to destroy homeownership. You've got to remember that. You form all these committees and everybody to do everything, but it's all dependable on the money. And let me tell you, I've got a minute and 11 seconds to tell you about my people. My people use an outhouse. How many of yous use an outhouse? When you sit on it in the cold of winter, you get up, you see the outline of your butt. I was heated with a wood stove in the kitchen. I took a bath on top of the sink. We had a wood stove in the living room, and I carried the wood in the coal end to keep it warm. The walls were lined with paper. How did I get what I got? I busted my butt. Put myself through nine years of college and tried to help this county do waste reduction, and he didn't do it. But there's one thing there about all of that. My dad, at 13 years old, was kicked out of his house. That's what my people went through and was raised in a sawmill camp. Never took a drink in his life and never smoked a cigarette. You can take a pig down and put him in a new house, and that's exactly what happened with some of our public housing in Cherokee. The Indians didn't want to live in the house, and they put the cattle inside it. Same thing happened out West.
All right. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I've got a handout here if I can...
You can share with our clerk.
Good evening. My name is Jody Williams. I'm a native to Asheville and one of the founding members of Help Asheville Bears. Help Asheville Bears is here tonight to bring your attention to a historic tragic event affecting at least a dozen black bears in a 25-mile radius in and around Asheville. Four months ago, a bear that I and my family knew by the name of Peaches, a mother with three cubs, disappeared near the Cliffs Community in Arden. When Peaches reappeared four weeks later, on August 18th, her cubs were with her, but she was missing her right front forelimb and paw from the elbow down. Her cubs looked healthy, but Peaches had lost significant weight, was extremely skittish, and was struggling to get around. All that knew her as a healthy and happy bear were devastated by her injury. A few days later, a local media outlet ran a story about a bear with a missing limb. And when we learned it was a different bear than our Peaches, we knew human interference was maiming our bears and Help Asheville Bears was born. In less than four months, the Help Asheville Bears Facebook page has grown to over 75,000 followers. And coverage of these tragic events have reached an international audience. Colonel Scotty Morgan and his wife Carol have pledged a $50,000 reward for any information leading to the arrest and conviction of whoever is harming our bears. With the help of our followers, we now have 12 confirmed individual bears, five of which are mothers with cubs, with unusual amputation injuries in a cluster in and around Asheville. Nowhere else on earth has there been this many bears with amputation injuries in such a small area. With the help of several veterinary and wildlife experts, including forensic veterinary pathologists from the University of Florida, we know that these excruciatingly painful debilitating amputation injuries were caused by a snare trap or ligature. The 12 confirmed main bears are the ones that escaped the traps. And there's no way to know how many did not escape and were illegally killed after prolonged and agonizing suffering. Initially, the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission concluded that these injuries were all caused by car strikes, which in itself would also be a huge problem that needed to be solved. But now, after months of day and night collaboration with Governor Cooper's office, Lieutenant Governor's Forest Office, Attorney General Stein's office, and the Commission's Wildlife Enforcement Division, we are confident that the state is using its resources to pit in to the maiming of our bears. We're here to respectfully ask that the Buncombe Commissioners liaise with the state governor so that they are aware that you too want a quick resolution to stop these horrific injuries inflicted upon our beloved black bears. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer. Thanks very much.
Jody, thank you very much. We don't typically ask questions down low. Thank you, thank you very much for bringing this issue to our attention and for the information. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Newman, and I'm here on behalf of Help Asheville Bears. I'm sure that you would all agree that no matter what level of compassion that someone has for wildlife, that the majority of Buncombe County citizens would be horrified that the black bears in our community are being tortured and mutilated by illegal bear traps. You may wonder why anyone would commit such a heinous crime. Well, the answer is for money. There is a booming black market trade for live bears, dead bears, and bear parts in China and other Asian countries. Even though it's against the law, bear poaching operations are occurring right now in western North Carolina. The 12 bears with amputated limbs that Jody mentioned are just the ones we know about in Buncombe County. There are God knows how many other bears that have amputated limbs and/or have been killed or maimed by bear poachers in this area. With that said, the bears that have severed legs can survive, but they struggle on a daily basis. They must hop in wooded and mountainous terrain. They struggle to forage for food, especially in the spring, to protect themselves and their cubs, and during hunting seasons to survive. Commissioners, I hope that you'll agree that the persons committing this heinous crime should be held responsible. Not only is bear poaching and illegal traps inhumane and... Not only is bear poaching in illegal traps inhumane and cruel, but it's against the law in the state of North Carolina, and it must stop in Buncombe County. The members of Help, Help Asheville Bears spent months trying to convince the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission that the amputated limbs on these bears were not caused by car strikes, but that they were caused by illegal traps. It was obvious to us, and it was confirmed by wildlife experts and by forensic pathology veterinarians. Thankfully, Colonel Scotty Morgan and the Williams family, who founded Help Asheville Bears, persevered contacting the state of North Carolina until finally an investigation was officially started. Now that the wildlife enforcement is on board, we need your support. Respectfully, Help Asheville Bears, with 75,000 followers and growing, is requesting that the Buncombe County Commissioners liaise with the State Attorney General's Office and with the North Carolina Wildlife Commission to not only stop the bear poaching operations, but to convict the persons committing these atrocious crimes against the black bears in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Hope you all had a great day. I had plenty to eat. My concern here is a big one, the fiscal year of audit. Everybody likes to hear this good report that you hear every year. I've heard them for 30-some years. And let me tell you, these little items that they bring up every once in a while, and some of them are bragging on about the cleanup around here. I think first of all, you better not be patting people on the back too quick because that happened for years. And you see what happened to Buncombe County. One of the worst things ever happened to a county was indictments, and it was overlooked by the Oversight Committee, just like you people sitting on a fire. So instead of patting on the back, you need to be asking more serious questions. These auditor gets paid thousands and several hundred thousand dollars over the year to do this job. But they're skimming the surface. They're not even touching the real thing. And someone said, you got some great employees, and I absolutely agree. The employees are the ones that finds the problems, and the politicians are the ones that sweeps it under the rug because they don't want nobody to know about it. Did you hear me? The politician sweeps it under the rug, just like investigations swept under the rug. There's a lot of criminal activity that takes place in tourist towns that gets swept under the rug by the sheriffs, by the police, by the judges, by the lawyers, and everybody else because they don't want a black spot in the county. I used to work around the Sheriff's Department. I know how privileged politicians and their children are. They get driven home drunk when they get stopped. What about that? Their kids gets took and give good help if you are at the status that you need to be. So I'm just warning you, instead of pats on the back, you need to be oversight. You need to be asking more serious questions than you are. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Ronnie Payne. I'm a native of Buncombe County. What brings me here tonight is an article I read in a newspaper a couple weeks ago. Commissioner Newman, or Chairman Newman, I believe that it was mainly your support for free transit throughout the city of Asheville and Buncombe County. I want to talk to you about another item that, Chairman, you were behind about 12, 13 years ago. It was 90 days of free transit. I was a part of that. Like I said, I'm a native of Buncombe County. I spent almost 45 years working for the city transit system. 27 of those years, I was maintenance director. That was three of the hardest months that I was ever employed there. It was so hard to keep equipment on the road. Those buses were packed from front to back all day long. We, we went through three transmissions during that 90-day period. And I remember leaving here at 2:30 one afternoon to drive to Greensboro to get a transmission to bring back, only to call some guys back to work to have them put it back in because we needed that bus again for the next day. We had so many failures during that 90-day period. Now, I said it was overcrowding, the buses were full. These buses were heavy-duty buses, more heavy-duty than what they've got today. But when you can't, when you have that many people on the bus, you have so many more stops, stop and go, stop and go. It affected airbags, it affected brakes, it affected things that we normally didn't have a problem with during the normal course of business. But this was the part, that was part of my job, so I had to adapt to that. But the part that bothered me the most was when I'd hear drivers talking about, we're losing customers. These elderly people don't have anywhere to sit because the homeless people are getting on the bus and they're staying on it all day long. They've got a captive audience to try to get money from now. Would you want your mother or your grandmother to have to ride the city bus and hang on because there's no seat for them? The low-floor buses they have today, if you have two wheelchairs, you only have two other seats that are available on the lowest part of the, on the front part of the bus. The other three, the other three seats are up on top of the right front wheel well. And again, they don't hold as many people as the buses you had when I was there. Before you guys start thinking about this deal again, it all sounds good, but it's like, it's just like when you go to build a house. You build the finest house in the world, but if you don't have the foundation for that house, that house is going to come apart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. All right. Anyone else? All right. We've got a couple of announcements. On December 17th at 8:30 a.m., the Buncombe County Commission will hold a strategic planning workshop at 200 College Street, first floor conference room in downtown Asheville. That same day at 1:00 p.m., the Commissioners will hold their pre-meeting at, in room 326, 200 College Street. And then that evening at 5:00 p.m., the County Commissioners will hold their regular meeting here in room 326 in downtown Asheville. I do not believe we have a need for a closed session this evening. We're adjourned.